Do you mean on here?
Yeah.
May I say a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under our individual will with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the regular public meeting for the lower Gwinnett Township Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, September 24th, 2024. The Board of Supervisors did meet in executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss matters of real estate and personnel. I'm going to start off our meeting with the Resolution 2024-27 honoring the 200th anniversary of Gwinnett Hall. We want to thank everyone in attendance to that honor, but the resolution I will read is, whereas Gwinnett Hall was originally built in 1824 by Wardner Cresson, and whereas Gwinnett Hall was renovated in the Greek Revival Architecture by Myers-Busch in 1852, and whereas Gwinnett Hall has been owned by several owners, including Nicholas Biddle, Rainwright, Director of the Historical Society of Pennsylvania, and the President of the Library Company of Philadelphia, and whereas Gwinnett Hall has several names over the years until 1860 when John Gilbert named it Gwinnett Hall, and whereas Gwinnett Hall was added to the National Registry of Historic Places in 1985 for its outstanding architecture, and whereas Gwinnett Hall will be recognized by the Whistaken Valley Historical Society the first weekend of October 2024. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Lower Gwinnett hereby recognize and honor Gwinnett Hall on its 200th anniversary. I don't know if anyone's here present from the Whistaken Historic Society, but I know the current owner is here, so if you want to come forward and we can present. Next we want to open up to public comments. Citizen comments, concerns or questions for items not on the agenda.
Hello. This is Leola Hubbard.
Hi, Leola. If you could just state your name and your address.
Okay, Leola Hubbard, 920 Pershing Road, Penn Lynn. I'm seeing on the evening news that there's been another incident with a train in just outside of Cincinnati, Ohio, in which toxic fumes are leaking. They're talking about possible danger of explosion now, and I'm wondering, since the train tracks are right across the street from my house, if we, the township, have any knowledge of what comes through the township on the freight trains that come up that line? And I also would like to know what our state of preparedness is in case of incidents like that.
Thank you, Leola. I think I'm going to turn it over to John, who is our emergency preparedness. I'm not sure if he has all of the answers, but he can give you some.
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. We do not generally have knowledge of what kinds of materials are going across those tracks. They are used by both Septa Regional Rail and companies like CSX do take some freight. They do not give us heads up or warning. I think a lot of this is actually for security reasons that they do not provide that. In terms of response, yes, there is definitely a lot of preparedness that goes into things like chemical and rail spills. That can be chemical spills on highways, rail, anything else you can think of. There's a county hazmat team that trains regularly, and our fire departments are both trained on hazmat response. They have different, different levels of preparedness and different things that they can do depending on what the spill is and the nature of that. You know, we have things like response guidebooks that tell us how far we need to stay back or if we had to evacuate depending on the chemical. And there's a whole series of regulations and placards that are in place that is easy to identify that when we do see something that's out there and then can get people moved away quickly if we need to. Most cases, we don't.
Are you able to hear them, Leola?
Yes, yes, I was. I was just concerned because at one point I was on the down chemical community advisory board, and they did devote some time to that, and I know Dow used to assist our local fire departments in their training, but they're not in the area anymore and they don't, so we don't have the advantage of their hazmat equipment even. So I was just wondering what's, what happens now with this, this area? So thank you for the information.
Thank you. Any additional public comments? Items not on the agenda? Okay, you can come forward.
Hello, my name is Irene Loewitz and I live at 513 Montgomery Road. My name is Irene Loewitz and I live at 513 Montgomery Road. I'm here to update you on the ongoing noise problem emanating from the Whistaken Middle School HVAC system. The noise now starts at 6:00 AM and runs until 9 o'clock PM, which is four hours more than the last time that we spoke. In August, a second sound study was conducted by the school district. The study found that the noise ordinance was still being violated and now at a higher level. This report was supplied to Jamie and Mimi. The second study suggested that the school district purchase acoustic barriers to put up around the chiller, contrary to the previous study, which suggested an acoustic blanket, which was ordered in June and still has not arrived. To me, this exemplifies the school district's inability to fully understand and handle this issue. This is now the third township meeting that I have attended regarding this issue. I understand that it's not your job to fix the broken AC chiller at the Whistaken Middle School. That needs to be handled by the school district. It is, however, your job as our elected officials to ensure that laws are being upheld in our community. Whistaken Middle School is breaking the law, and Ms. Gleason is letting it happen. It's hard to imagine that the school would take this long or be this slow if the township were doing its job and citing them for violating the noise ordinance appropriately. Would a commercial entity be entitled to the same leniency while it was disturbing the peace? Are individuals entitled to the same leniency while disturbing the peace? We've been waiting since June. Of course not. The school needs to be held accountable just like everyone else. I'm here tonight to ask you to enforce the laws that have been set in place by Lower Gwinnett Township, and I think that that's only reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want an update?
I was going to ask for an update.
So we are enforcing the laws the way we would for any other company, anybody else. So if there were another, if there were a commercial business that had a lot of people in it, the public was going into it, a big store, the Kowloon Mall, something like that, and they had a loud chiller, we would not tell them they have to turn off the air conditioning because that's, it is practically speaking, the only way right now they could make the sound go away. Right now, there is, and we would not do that. We are certainly not doing that for a middle school. I've told you that. I've told Eric Rudolph that multiple times. We don't have the authority to do that, and I wouldn't ask them to turn the air conditioning off in a middle school if I had that authority. Practically speaking, you are. That's, that's the only way to make the sound go away right now. So we have, we have spent so much time applying pressure to the school district to try to see if there's any way to speed this up. They, I think they've called multiple times now because so many different township employees, including Jamie and me, have been spending a lot of time on this. There's no way for us to speed that up, and I truly believe there's no way for them to get the noise blankets first. So what we would do for any other company is say, you have to address this issue. And they, they came back to us from the beginning when you and Eric first came to the board saying they had a noise consultant came in, they hired an expert who advised them to buy the sound blankets, but there was a long lead time for the blankets that they were advised to buy to muffle the sound from the chiller. And they still have not arrived. They are scheduled to arrive the week of October 14th, and the school district has their, the installer who's going to do that, that is scheduled. So as long as they do arrive when they're supposed to, they will be installed that week. They also have it scheduled as part of that work that they will test it. So if by then it's gotten cool enough that the air conditioning isn't on or isn't on as much as it's been of late, they will make sure it's put on to its full level that, that it would be used so they can test whether the sound blankets work so that you're not in this position next summer. We can find out if they work. They did tell us that they had, they had hired, I thought it was the same sound consultant, maybe it's a, they had the sound consultant come out again, and they took more readings, and they did come back and recommended also installing the sound barriers. And they have told us they're working on that now of getting that designed, and they'll be coming back to us for building permits to install those. I don't know what the timeline for that is now, but that I would think is certainly going to be much faster than the sound blankets. So we are working on it. We've stayed in constant contact with multiple people at the school district. I know that Tim Bricker, who is the new business manager, has at least been in contact with Eric acknowledging that this whole process from the school district's end has, you've been dealing with this issue for several years, and he's apologized for that. He wasn't with these, brand new with the school district and saying this is, you know, it shouldn't have lasted this long, and he's going to make sure it gets addressed. So you definitely have their attention. It is taking a while, though. It just is right now, and, and this is how we would treat any other big entity that had a public facility that people were going into.
I guess I just want to know if there's some kind of deadline as to how long this is going to run because I'm afraid that it's going to go on a lot longer. The, the, the sound, Harrison Acoustics, who did the first study and recommended the blanket, and then did the second study and recommended, oh, well, maybe you do need barrier walls. I'm afraid that that's not going to solve the problem, and we're still going to have noise.
I can. And I can't guarantee that those solutions are going to be solved. We will treat the school district like we would treat anyone else, as long as they seem to be sincerely trying to solve the problem. We're going to keep working with them. It's why our building inspector has, was the one who was talking to them about what was scheduled for the installer and also making sure that they have the testing of, this is for the sound blankets, when, when that would be, when they're, the installer is there putting the blankets in, that while the installer is still there, they will do a full test to see, is that helping at all? So we don't have to wait till next May or June when they put the air conditioning on again to really see if it works, that we can find out then if that works. You know, we can, hopefully, we could try to do as much as we can to make sure the sound barrier, the walls are installed by then, so we can also make sure that's fully tested. If that doesn't work, then the school district is the owner of that property. They have to come up with a different solution. So we would stay on them to come up with a solution. That's how that works. This is, this is property maintenance code issues and as well as the, the noise ordinance. There's no hammer. We don't walk in with the army and say, stop making that noise. We work with property owners. The citation process would only have them go to district court and get a relatively small fine given what they're doing here. That wouldn't make the sound go away. It would just cost them more money. And if they were, if they truly were ignoring us, that would be the process we would go through because that would be the only option we have. But what we have now is a school district that's trying, I believe, to solve the problem. So we're going to give them that chance. By mid-October, we should have an idea of whether it works or not. And if not, then we, then they won't, they're going to have to come up with more solutions. If neither of those things worked, so they put it, so it seems unlikely that you'd put in sound blankets and a sound wall and it wouldn't have any effect on the noise. If it doesn't have enough effect, then we say you, the property owner, need to do more. And we have more of these conversations and we've come up with, you know, if they have to bring their noise consultant back or have to bring in an engineer or something like that, what are your other options? They're the property owner. They need to come back and say, all right, now we're going to consider, you know, whatever it is, enclosing a shed around it. I don't know what their options are. I can't tell them what to do about it. They have to do that. So it could take a while, which is why it's, we insisted that we make sure it is fully tested while the installer is there. So we could also, if, if they install that sound blanket and they do the test and it isn't working as well as they expected, the installer's still right there. Do they have to do, you know, some adjusting and see if they can truly maximize the blanket so they can find out? If that doesn't work, they need to do something else. Maybe if they put up one wall and that isn't enough, they need to put more walls. I don't know what the answer, I can't tell you what the answer to that is, and I don't know how long it will take. But, but right now, we have to wait to see those two steps.
Ms. Lewis, just so that we're clear, this is not a criminal offense. This is a property maintenance issue. Given the fact that we realize that there are children in the building throughout the day, that we did get complaints. Me personally, I heard from children's parents saying that the school had started off the day being a little bit too warm because of complaints related to the noise of the air conditioning and them turning it off too early in the day. I, be that as it may, I think that we're entering now a period of where the weather will not be as hot as it was, potentially not needing to run as long, but we're going to engage with them like we would any other property owner. We're aware of it. We're actively engaging it with it. Our staff is updating us as to what's going on, and as long as they're making progress and keeping engaged with us around how they plan to resolve the issue, once we get the blankets to see how that works and to test it, and if there's another step in putting a barrier up and testing it, until we ultimately get it resolved, we will continue to engage and, and hopefully engage with you and the other residents of Montgomery Avenue to make sure it's to the satisfaction that no one's being disturbed. So now that we are involved in this process and we're aware of it, the, the only other option, if they were not engaging, would be to go to district court and to give them a small fine. That's not ultimately going to address the issue, and so our goal is to engage with them so that the issue can be addressed and addressed in a way where we all can be satisfied with the ultimate resolution.
You know, the problem is that it's not enough of a priority for the school. The school has a lot of things to do, and it's not enough of a priority for it to be analyzed by engineers and, you know, some kind of committee put in place to make this, this problem go away as soon as possible or at least be lessened. These barrier walls should have been put up in the beginning of the summer. And so, but they're just, somebody who, Harrison Acoustics, who measures sound, is the one who said, oh, get a blanket. Then they came back, oh, get a, get a wall. It's, it's, it's not enough of a priority for the school to make the noise be reduced. The weather doesn't seem to make any difference because they were running up full speed yesterday, and the noise could be heard on Houston Road yesterday when it was 64 degrees. So I don't, it, it, the, the air conditioning runs, you know, I guess maybe until the middle of October, but it doesn't matter what the temperature is. You know, and that's why I am upset because it's not enough of a priority. And I don't know how to make it more of a priority. I have the board and public comments. I've gone to the school board with public comments, and you know, you know, they're doing this, they're doing that, but it's not being addressed efficiently. And I don't know where else to turn, honestly.
I think we've only known about this since June. Is that when you said you first came to us?
Right.
So it's been three months for us. So hopefully with the pressure that we'll continue, the communication and the pressure that we continue to put on them, they'll make it more of a priority and we'll have a resolution. But you've been living with this for a long time. I'd be frustrated also. But just remember, we've only had this for three months, and we're doing what we can, we're doing what we would do in any other circumstances. Nobody's getting any favorable treatment because it's the school district. Then, we've only had it for three months.
Uh huh. Uh huh, okay. Well, I did get the impression that they were getting a more favorable treatment because they're a school district. I mean, Mimi said, she just said, you know, especially when there's children involved.
But she said, she said if it was, she said if any, any public, if it was a mall, if it was any, we can't, right, you don't want, nobody, nobody wants the kids to be sweating in class, right? So we have to be mindful of that. And reality is, to solve your problem, that's what we would need to tell them to do, turn off the air conditioner. That would solve the problem, right? But we can't do that. So we have to, it's, it's not an easy solution when we're trying to find one. And again, we've only been at it for three months. Let's, just I would say, give us a chance to try to work this through. I know you've been living with it for a long time. We, we didn't know about it.
So Mimi, I don't mean to prolong this, but were there not any suggestions of interim fixes until our, you know, like a Band-Aid approach until these blankets came, or that's not an option?
There has been discussion about some kind of barrier was, I mean, that's kind of an obvious solution, and we had talked to them about that. I think they expect, they expected the sound blankets to be in, in August, so they did not expect it to take as long. They thought, they had ordered them in June. They, they were given an eight to 10 week, so they were hoping the eight weeks would be that they, they weren't open to the, the school district was not open to the barrier idea. We had even floated to them, you know, put a school bus there as a makeshift barrier, see if it works. But you know, we were trying to come up with, and they didn't, school district did not want to do that. So, you know, we, we've worked, we've tried to come up ourselves with just what are things you should look at? The school district is the property owner. They have to be the ones to figure out what's appropriate for that chiller and what's going to work, what they can live with. But they did, so I, I think things have changed a little bit since the new business manager has been there. You truly have their attention. You really do. So I, I mean, I get that you're frustrated because the sound continues, but they're, they're not ignoring you. And I, so I think that seemed to be where, you know, sound, the, the second sound study came from, they are finally now going ahead with sound barriers. It appears anyway, they haven't installed them, but it sounds like they're going to.
It, it seems like a very unfortunate situation. I know having that type of sound at my home would make me lose the use of my yard because I wouldn't be able to stand that sound. I would be very irate, and we empathize with your situation. My only suggestion would be, if they can't find, if they cannot order or receive these sound blankets from the manufacturer, can they go somewhere around the United States and see if somebody has, you know, what is that star? Yeah, to see if there's another source or something like that. I don't know. I feel really bad about this situation because I, my neighborhood has had a similar thing, so I understand. Not exactly similar, but a noise issue.
Okay. Thanks for your attention and thanks for your empathy.
Thank you. Any additional public comments on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, going to move on to our building and zoning. This evening, we have a public hearing on the conditional use application for Amber Yards at 300 Brookside Avenue to modify the master plan. Add two accessory storage structures, going to turn it over to our solicitor.
Thank you. This is a public hearing to consider the conditional use application of AY Commercial LP for property known as Amber Yards located at 300 Brookside Avenue, located within an F industrial zoning district. The conditional use seeks a modification of the approved master plan for the mixed-use campus to allow two accessory structures, essentially storage containers behind building number 35 for the tenant occupying that building. The accessory storage units will be used to store chemicals related to the existing warehouse portion of the campus. The conditional use is required to modify the master plan by virtue of prior decisions that have been made by this board in connection with Amber Yards. A conditional use is essentially a permitted use as long as the applicant can demonstrate compliance with the objective standards contained in the zoning ordinance. The board is sitting tonight in its quasi-judicial capacity as opposed to its legislative capacity, and therefore the decorum will be more similar to a courtroom-type atmosphere. Only one person should be speaking at a time, and please do not speak unless you're recognized by the chairperson, since we do have a court reporter present, and we don't want to give him any headaches this evening. The applicant will make a presentation followed by questions from the board and the public. Anyone tonight can make comment. However, if you desire party status, that is the ability to cross-examine witnesses, to present evidence or to take an appeal, you must request that status now in order to avail yourself of those rights. So I'll ask if there's anyone requesting party status this evening. Now, you can always ask questions. Party status is required if, for example, you think you might appeal the decision. Doesn't cost you anything to be a party.
It's not so.
All right, so I don't see anyone or hear anyone wishing to be a party, so we'll proceed on that basis. I'm going to mark several exhibits as township exhibits. Exhibit T1, the application dated August 7, 2024. There are numerous exhibits attached to the application, which the applicant may choose to introduce into evidence this evening. Exhibit T2 is the public notice of hearing. Exhibit T3, the proof of publication. Exhibit T4, the review letter of the township engineer Gilmore and Associates dated August 15, 2024. And exhibit T5, the meeting minutes of the Lower Gwinnett Township Planning Commission dated August 21, 2024, at which time the application was reviewed and was recommended for approval by the planning commission. At this point, I'll turn this over to the applicant's representative.
Good evening. Thank you. Kristin Pianzio from Hamburg, Ruben Mullin, Maxwell and Lupin. It's nice to see you this evening. I have two witnesses. I'm going to try to streamline this. There's history here. It might be easier for me to summarize it before I call the property owner to testify, if that's okay. So the property is zoned F industrial. I have handed you three exhibits. A1 consists of two pages. It is an aerial photograph. It is rudely encompassed in red. That is the Amber Yards property. That is the subject of tonight's application. The second page of A1 is a closer image of the Integris property, which is the subject of the application. If you're looking at the first page of A1, it's that white building at the bottom of what's outlined as the Amber Yards property. The second page shows a closer image of that. And in that image, you'll see the cutout of the building that is the form, the, the higher part of the Integris property, and that is where they proposed to locate a storage container, and that is why we are here. We're here to amend the conditional use to allow the addition of a storage container at that location of the property. So it's snug in between the building and that tree line, buffered from the residential neighbors on the other side of it. Uh, buffered from the residential neighbors on the other side of it. Um, an accessory structure is not a structure that is permitted in the F industrial district. So we went to the zoning hearing board. We gave a presentation there. Neighbors within 500 feet were notified and invited um, in order to have this storage container um, outside the building. Note that Integris does use chemicals in their building. They are not designated hazardous materials as that is uh, defined in code books. They are however flammable uh, and dangerous, something you wouldn't want to play with, things like acetone. Um, and things like that that you'll hear about. Uh, so these are things that are already in the building. This is what they do. What they've liked to do is step up their game and move these um, solvents into this contained structure, which you'll, which you'll see in a minute. It has uh, air conditioning. It has a fire suppression system. It has or will have a hard uh, alarm to the fire company. It has a containment system. If there's a leak and there's a four hour firewall in this container where we want to move these chemicals that are inside the building, outside the building. Status quo. Nothing is changing about the operation of their company. No, they're not adding employees. All they're doing is moving stuff that they keep inside, outside. And the fire marshal and your code enforcement department has reviewed this. What they are storing is legal. It meets all required codes. They like the fact that we're putting it outside in a storage container because it's outside, unlike where it is inside with the people. So um, that is why we are here. Um, the uh, I'm going to have Matt sworn in just so we can get to it and not waste much of your time. Do you have the microphone? Yeah, could you swear on that for me?
Yes. Sure. Matthew Sigel, S.I.G.E.L.
And you are a principal of the owner entity for the Ambler Yards property. Is that true?
Yes.
And you entered into a 99 year land lease with the owner BASF back in 2015. Is that true?
Correct.
And you assigned that to another entity pursuant to a memorandum of assignment that was submitted as part of the application in 2019. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. Also, in, in 2016, we worked with the township to revitalize what was a vacant uh, plant uh, to repurpose it into Ambler Yards. Do you remember that?
Yes.
And we negotiated and came up with a mixed use district to be added to the F industrial district. Do you remember that?
Yes.
And the mixed use di- district allowed by conditional use, a number of different uses on the campus. Is that true?
Yes.
And what you wanted to do was invest in this campus to revitalize it and to repurpose the structures that were there. Is that true?
Yes.
And through that you have, you've done that, right?
Yes.
And, and what kind of uses do you have on the campus?
Uh, we have a mixture of office. Uh, we have a CrossFit gym, a brewery. Uh, we have some lab tenants, warehouse tenants. Um, we have uh, retail, uh, food, uh, restaurant in the facility.
Did you say office?
Office, yes.
And you also have um, engaged in community activities on the property.
Yes.
What are those?
Uh, on third Friday during spring, summer and fall, we have uh, Food Truck Fridays. Uh, we have, uh, our tenants have events. We have uh, other community events. Uh, in the field, we uh, have some outside people come in that can rent it for, we've had weddings on the facility, birthdays, uh, things like that.
You've had fa- uh, family movie nights in the summertime?
Yep. We had family movie nights in the past. Uh, we had a car show. It wasn't so great, so we're not doing that again. Um, but uh, you know, events, community minded events like that.
Okay. And that was approved, that mixed use campus was approved by conditional use in 2016, correct?
Yes.
And as part of the conditional use requirements, we had to develop a master plan. Is that true?
Yes.
And the master plan designated areas, in fact, in the code I'm reading from, it says uh, the master plan depicts where each of the above category of uses and parking shall occur on the property. We did that, right?
Yes.
And what I've handed the board as A2 is a copy of the master plan that was attached to the original conditional use for this property. Is that right?
Yes.
And Integris is over on the left-hand side in the category of building use B, office, lab, industrial, manufacturer uses, right?
Yes.
And despite my argument that we aren't changing the use, it's still storage. It's just moving from inside a building into a storage building. Staff felt that it was a change in the master plan and that is why we are here tonight, correct?
Yes.
Because one of the conditions of the 2016 order was that any change in the master plan required another conditional use, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So um, A3 depicts uh, a photograph. There's two photographs as part of A3, the first of which shows a pod. What's the significant of that photograph?
Uh, that photograph represents the approximate location of the first uh, chemical storage unit. Um, it's not, it's not the pod you see, uh, but that's the approximate location of where the unit is going to go.
Because your tenant who is here tonight um, filed a building permit application to have the storage container um, placed on the property, correct?
Yes.
And it's in the location where this pod is shown in this photograph, correct?
The, the, the unit that they're going to put there is actually directly behind this. But it's, it's onsite. It's just not where it's going to.
Right. It's onsite because it's not hooked up yet, right?
Correct. It's just sitting there.
Right. Because we got flagged saying, nope, you have to go to the zoning hearing board. You have to get a conditional use approval, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Second photograph of A3. What is that?
So this is the actual unit. Uh, so when I snapped the first photo, I was standing like right in front of that red box. Uh, and then I just basically just spun 180 degrees around and took a picture of the actual unit.
Okay. So the con- conditional use criteria in section 1298.07 of the zoning ordinance has a number of items for the board to consider when uh, reviewing this application. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. And despite the fact that it fits in the mixed use campus because it's the same use, we have this criteria to look at, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to go through it real quick with you, Matt. So um, we meet the standards and criteria of the F industrial district, true?
Yes.
Um, we meet the legislative intent of the mixed use campus district. Is that true?
Yes.
And we have a right to seek this conditional use because it's actually required in the code, correct?
Yes.
And is there anything about this uh, movement of storage from inside to this container? Is there anything about it that would negatively uh, affect the neighboring land uses in any way?
No.
In fact, it would be harmonious with the layout and the mixed use campus as you have it today, true?
Yes.
And has the property been properly serviced by public service systems, including police protection, fire protection, utilities, park and recreation?
Yes.
Actually, you're furthering fire protection and safety with the use of this container in your opinion. Is that true?
Correct, in my opinion.
Okay. Nothing's changing about the internal circulation on the property?
No.
Um, have we submitted in your opinion sufficient plans and studies and other items that demonstrate that we comply with the conditional use criteria?
Yes.
Um, and the board has the right to attach conditions to this conditional use criteria. You understand that?
Yes.
And um, the permit is waiting, right? Waiting for this approval. So we would agree that if one year had passed, this conditional use would expire. True?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have of Matt. Um, I have a representative of the tenant to testify next.
Any questions of Mr. Sigel before he leaves?
I have just one question. Excuse me, Kristen. Exactly where on the uh, illustration will these be placed?
Do you mind if I point to it for you?
Yes, please.
Just to make it clear for the record, please.
Okay. Let the record reflect that I am holding A1 in a vertical direction. At the bottom of A1 is a white building. That is the build, the subject matter building. And the placement of the container is between the tree line and the building, right about there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. You good? Okay. Can I have my next witness sworn in?
I do. Peter Littak, uh, L.I.T.A.K.
And by whom are you employed, Peter?
Integris.
And how long have you worked for the company?
Uh, over 25 years.
And what is your uh, position with them?
Uh, Director of Technology.
And you have authorization to appear tonight?
Yes.
And in preparation for tonight, I explained to you that there's concerns about the chemicals or the solvents that you use in the operation of your business. Could you just give the board a flavor for what you guys do?
Uh, we're a, this, this facility here is our R and D facility. So uh, we developed
Is that R and D?
R and D, research and development, correct. This is our uh, North American research and development facility supporting our other sites. Uh, it's also our QC, uh, our our, well, our, our development uh, facility for QC. We also do some small volume manufacturing, uh, primarily uh, used in medical devices and in the semiconductor industry.
Okay. And I said in the opening, you've been sitting here since the onset of the hearing, correct?
I have.
And you've heard me um, summarize what it is that you do in the building today and what it is that you want to move out into this storage container. Did I accurately depict that?
Yes.
You're not planning on doing anything different than what you do today in the, in the building?
No.
Okay. And um, you went and gave me some samples of chemicals that you store or that you utilize as part of your company's um, you know, their business. Could you describe for the board some of those?
Uh, sure. I mean, uh, there's acetone, uh, acrylic acid, ethyl acrylate, I, uh, ethyl acrylate, uh, isopropyl alcohol, methanol, uh, tributalamine, toluene. Those are examples of some of the materials that are being stored there.
So in the functioning of your business, you're careful with these chemicals, correct?
Yes, we have to be.
Okay. And you store them within the building today?
Correct.
And why is it that you wanted to store them in this outside containment?
Uh, we see it as, as a significant safety upgrade for our facility. Uh, it protects our employees, uh, this building. Uh, the outer struc- well, this, this out building has a four hour rated firewall. It has a containment, uh, fire suppression. Uh, so it, 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 it's a safer solution than we currently have.
Okay. And there's nothing radioactive about these chemicals, nothing toxic in and of themselves. If there's a spill on the driveway, could that happen? And should the neighbors be concerned?
Uh, the materials will not be dispensed in this area. So we will just be uh, storing the materials here and moving them in, in and out of that facility into our, into our warehouse. Uh, so uh, we do not expect to have any spills. There will not be, not, we will not be using the material there. So.
And you've had discussions with the building code department and the fire marshal, and they actually prefer this storage arrangement as you're proposing. Is that true?
Uh, I, I believe that there have been in uh, those discussions, yes.
That they were part of those discussions and, and they were happy to see these outside in a separate container?
Correct.
Okay. They're all the questions I have for him.
I have a couple of questions. Um, how long, how long has the company been at that location?
Uh, I believe since 2019.
If it's safer to do this outside, why are you only just doing it now?
Uh, just, oh, oh, just, it takes a little while, takes capital, it takes other things. So we're moving in that direction. So.
Do you have the same fire suppression systems inside, as you will, in the storage facility?
Uh, I would, no, this should be a, a better supre- fire suppression system in here. Uh, this I believe is a dry chemical based system, uh, specifically designed for flammables, uh, as opposed to uh, our water based system that's in the building. So this is an upgrade from that system.
And council asked um, what would happen if it spilled outside? And I understand that you're not planning to use it outside, but accidents do happen. So if any of these chemicals spilled outside, what would happen if it got into the air?
Uh, I mean, more than likely the, most of these are solvents and they would evaporate. If we had any kind of significant spill, we would probably be uh, contacting EPA or PADEP for support in terms of any cleanup. That may happen. So we probably not, we would not be cleaning it up ourselves. So we would be asking for support.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. You kind of are speaking fast and low, so I just want to make sure I heard accurately. So in the building currently, right now, you are doing research, development, quality control and some manufacturing? Is that accurate?
Correct.
And just to be clear, um, all of the, I'm not going to name them all, but I, I wrote down about six solvents that appears that you're storing currently right now in the building? Did that happen as soon as you moved in?
Uh, pretty much, yes.
Okay. And so then you, this container would have a four hour um, fire barrier? What is the timeframe for the fire barrier currently within the building?
Uh, I believe it's two.
It's two hours.
Is that, I believe it's two.
From what I remember, when we uh, originally did the uh, walkthroughs with fire marshal and with uh, code enforcement officers, that the interior of the warehouse holds two hours worth of water.
Okay. Is there a plan to add to the chemicals that you would be storing outside or?
Uh, there are no current plans.
No current. To onsite, none of these chemicals are actually accessed? They're only stored? Is that accurate?
They're, they're, they're only stored, correct. They're not, they're not dispensed. They are simply stored there, brought in when needed into the, into the, into the area, into the warehouse as it were to be used. So there's no use outside. That's correct.
And so in transporting these materials, are they transported in a way where they are protected as they're riding through our residential streets?
Uh, well, it's a short ride. It's a short trip to the uh, to our warehouse. It's right next to the thing. Uh, we plan on using a forklift.
Where's the warehouse?
I mean, it's, uh, where's the map? So I mean, they're, they are moving 20 feet.
20 feet?
20 feet, yeah, 20, 30 feet away at most.
So 20 feet away, when you're actually accessing the chemicals in the warehouse, are they utilizing a space that also has a fire protection?
The warehouse does have fire protection. We have hoods inside the warehouse, correct?
And is that water based or is it chemical based?
I'm sorry?
Is that water based or chemical?
Inside, it's water based.
Water based. So your actual warehouse, which is on the same campus, you would then be storing them inside to utilize them?
We would, limited amounts of material would be on the inside as we need, as we were using them, correct?
So you store it outside, but when you need to use it, you go out and get it from storage and bring it inside?
Correct.
Okay. And, and is there no possibility to just store it inside the warehouse?
Uh, there is, but I, I, again, I think this is, this is a safer solution for us.
Okay. So the storage is outside, the use is actually inside, and the safest solution is actually outside?
Correct.
And so what is just the emergency, I think, um, awareness plan that you have in case there is a spill?
I mean, we have a complete uh, emergency response plan. Uh, you know, uh, that, you know, who to contact, what to do. There's a complete plan in place.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have right now.
Anyone else?
I have a few questions. No, go ahead. I, I have a few questions and I apologize if you did say this earlier is um, why are you moving uh, the solvents out? Like what precipitated it? What's the?
Oh, like I said, it's just a, it's just a better storage solution for us. It's safer for our employees.
May, may I ask a follow-up question? Haven't you been upgrading inside the facility, putting improvements in and investing in the building?
We have.
Could maybe you elaborate on that? And this is part of that process of you modernizing?
Uh, well, we're upgrading the HVAC, uh, among other things. Uh, we have added some additional hoods, upgraded hoods. So they're uh, they're smarter than they were before. Um.
Okay. Well, I guess just what precipit- like is you're, you said, hey, one day you're just like, we want it to be safer. So we're going outside. Is that what happened? Or how did it lead to being stored outside?
Uh, I mean, and just looking at industry and best practices and, and, and how to, how to make the facility as safe as possible.
Okay. So it's, it was based on, um, I guess best practices within your industry?
Correct.
And what best prac- where did you get those best practices? Is there some type of?
I, I honestly, I, I can't answer that question. I'm not sure. So where it came from, so.
Okay. So you don't have a basis on, I, I just, I, I'm just trying to understand. So I, you know.
Do you, are you worried that there was, are you inquiring if there was an incident of some sort that precipitated?
No, no, no. I just wanted to know what, you know, they had initially, they, they kept the solvent stored inside. And at some point they wanted to move it outside. I just don't know, like, I just want to know why that's the case, like.
I think, I think
Can I just answer the question?
Yeah.
If you outline. Sure. I mean, I mean.
Put the picture up of the, of the container, please, gentlemen. Put the picture up of the, of the container, please, gentlemen.
So what, what was the ca- I've seen the container. What was your, what caused you to want to move the solvents from inside to outside?
Like I said, i- it, it's really just a safety issue. It's, it's safer for us. It's a better storage solution for us. If there were an incident, we are not, you know, our employees in our facility is not at risk.
Okay. And was that on your, was that your decision, or was that?
It was a, it was more than just my decision.
Okay. And whose decision was that?
Uh, it, it was a, you know, it was, uh, my, my manager's decision. It was, it was, it was a, you know, group decision. So, I mean, obviously, this had to go through, uh, a capital process to approve the funds. So it was, it was, it was approved on multiple levels.
A- and I understand that. I just wanted to know, like, do you guys had monthly meetings and say, hey, what do you do with safety? Do you guys?
We, we do, uh, I'm not, I mean, we do have monthly meetings in terms of a safety committee. We also have a EH, you know, department that, that also looks at the, things like this.
Okay, so we're, but you, you yourself weren't the one that precipitated the idea to move from inside to outside?
I, I was part of that.
Okay. And who else? You said your manager, you, and who else?
Uh, you know, you know, we have our VP, who that would be Dave Brown. Uh, we have EH person, which would, at that point, was probably Kim Zap, which has provided information for here. There, there was a, there was a, a number of people that work at the facility and take care of the facility that, that were part of that decision.
Okay. And what will you be doing, using with the space where you're moving the solvent from inside? What, that space, what will you be using that for?
Uh, that hasn't been determined yet. So, I mean, it's just, i- i- it is valuable space to us, but we don't have a plan for that, current plan for that space right now.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a question. I have a couple more questions.
Sure.
Just to kind of follow up what, uh, Mr. Chong was, was saying. So you did indicate that it was, it's safer for you to, to move it, and I'm assuming you meaning you and your employees or your organization. Can you speak to, is it safer for the residents that live nearby for you to move it outside?
I, I, I would, I would, I would think so. I mean, if, if we were to have, unfortunately, an incident, you know, uh, it, you know, and, and an incident were to grow, you're looking at an entire facility that potentially could have a, have a problem as opposed to just a single, small structure.
Okay. I don't know if that, okay.
So you're, you're limiting the, the impact of any incident that might happen?
And you're saying?
So I mean, and the, and this is a flammable, there, it's a flammable, the, the, the most, I guess, uh, the most likely hazard of these materials is, is flammability. So, and this structure is specifically, uh, designed to, to store flammables.
So all of these chemicals are flammable, but not considered hazards?
I, I, they're not considered hazmats. They're not. I didn't say they weren't hazardous.
So they are hazardous?
Yeah, it's just like bleach?
No, I'm asking him. I'm asking him. I'm sorry.
I mean, just like, it's all you gotta let the witness answer the question. You, you'll get your chance. So, I mean, just like, just like gasoline, I mean, again, I mean, there are many things that we ha- uh, we handle every day that are hazardous. But this is like, like I said, uh, I guess the best, best example I could give you, it would be, these are solvents, they're are flammable. So it's like gasoline.
Okay. In your opinion, are they hazardous?
Uh, I believe-
I'm, I'm going to object. He's not qualified to answer the question. He's a director.
So he doesn't know the answer?
He's not a chemist. No, he can't answer that question.
Okay. And you are, I just, to be clear, you're on the safety team?
We are, we're all members of safety team, but correct, so.
Okay. Do you, can you speak to, like, what the chemical industry would recommend as it relates to a distance, um, or minimal distance from these chemicals from residential properties?
Uh, I am not an expert in that. So I, I could not, that, that, that would be part of your zoning laws.
No, I wanted to know what the chemical industry would recommend.
I'm not qualified to, to answer that one.
Okay. In the event that there was, uh, an incident, um, how would you handle, I guess, uh, any claims related to that incident?
Uh, I mean, we, we are insured. Uh, I mean, that, that would be thing, I mean, we have an emergency response plan. We are insured. We would probably go to court, our corporate officers to help out with any incident.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the, as part of their lease requirements, I mean, they, they carry at, at least a three million dollar liability policy.
So the liability limits are three million dollars?
In excess, three million or, or higher. I don't know what they actually carry. That's what our lease requires them to carry, the minimum.
Okay, so the minimum is three million dollars. Okay.
I have a few questions. What are the operating hours of your business?
Uh, currently roughly eight to five, roughly.
So there are times when no one's on the premises?
There are.
And how often would you say you access this storage unit or will access it on a daily basis?
Uh, I would anticipate several times a day.
Several being two, three?
Yeah, probably two, three or more.
Is there any type of alarm system on this unit should somebody try to break into it?
Uh, we are planning on having, uh, there will be a camera, uh, that will be on this unit, and the unit is lockable. Uh, we can certainly look to have a, a, you know, a, an alarm added, a security alarm added to it.
And within the unit itself, how are the chemicals stored?
Uh, they're, they'd be on pallets.
Are they in plastic containers, metal containers?
Generally speaking, metal drums, fifty-five gallon metal drums.
And how are they transported from the unit to the building?
Forklift.
Forklift. And if it's safer for these to be outside in this unit, does that mean you're not going to be storing chemicals inside in the future?
Uh, we, that is, I mean, no significant amounts, correct? Only, only small amounts for daily use or, or whatever. All right. So I have, I, I'm just gonna follow up. Uh,
when, sorry, thanks. When you say smaller amounts, um, what, what are the size of the drums?
In the unit?
Yeah.
Fifty-five gallon.
So you're gonna move a drum inside, use it, leave it there, or move a drum inside and then move it back outside?
It's gonna move back out.
So you're just gonna move it back and forth as you need it?
Correct. We'll probably just, we'll probably dispense smaller quantities that we need inside, uh, for, for daily use. But otherwise, yes, we're gonna store it in the, in, in, in the unit.
Okay, thank you. Think we can do questions from the public at this point? Any questions from the public? Please come up, identify yourself, and where you live, please.
Sarah Williams?
I live at four ten North Spring Garden Street. Sarah Williams. Four ten North Spring Garden Street, Lower Gwinnett, right next to Ambler Yards. So when you have these fifty-five gallon drums, right, in the storage unit, all of these different chemicals that are in there, they all have the same temperature control?
Yeah.
Oh. And then you're gonna move them back and forth, take a little bit out, and then move it back? And how big is that unit? Okay, and as you grow your company, will you need additional units?
Uh, Seth?
The, the, the application, uh, includes this single unit and a, a future additional one year.
Additional, more than one?
Two.
Two, more than two?
Two.
Okay. And this is backed by the railroad tracks, and then the greenway, and then your company. Is that correct?
I- i- it's at the Mather's Road end of the site. Yeah.
If it's okay, I can share the Plan A two, page two.
Right, and this is the walkway up. I know where it is.
This is the last.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. That's it for now. Thank you. Here.
Anyone else?
My name is Joan Zeller. J O A N Z E L L E R, four twenty Brookside Avenue. Um, I'd like to know, is there a time limit or end date for these continual conditional uses? Does, is that a thing? Or is this in perpetuity?
I don't understand the question. Hear it? You mean asking for additional uses?
Or can they keep coming back and asking for additional use?
This business may go away, I guess. Um, is there a time limit? You know, like, you can do this for ten years, then, then you can't, or you have to apply again? I don't know. Is it just forever? People can store now these types of chemicals here?
Is it related only to this company deal, or so if the company stops doing business, could someone else come in and use that?
The testimony, as I understand it, is it's for this particular company.
Is that in writing?
It's in testimony.
Okay.
Under oath.
So if they decided to move something, um, somebody else would have to apply to do something similar, correct?
That would be my understa-
It's not like, it just continues on.
No.
Okay, okay. And what are the liability, liability limited, limits of the Alpakin, um, in the event of a hazmat event?
You mean the financial liability limits?
Like the insurance coverage?
Well, I assume it's whatever the amount of the damages are. I mean, their liability would be whatever the damages are. I think the question you want is what's their ability to pay whatever the damages are?
I think that sounds good, too.
Okay.
I think that's a question.
Right, so it depends on their, their-
Probably the legal advice that we might not want to give.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's a good point.
That's supposed to be answered.
So a- a- again, I'll say, our, so as, as landlord, our minimum requirement for their insurance is three million. Entegris is a publicly traded company with a market cap of about four billion. So I don't, again, to, to Mr. Turski's point, I don't know what their ultimate liability is, but those are two numbers that I think people can think about.
Okay. Um, and, um, who do we actually go to? Who does one go to, um, if they have complaints about the facility, for whatever reason? Do you go to here? Do we go to them? Do we go, what, who, who, what authority?
If you want to turn around.
Matt handles all the-
Just go to him.
He's volunteer. Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any questions online?
Can I just ask one follow-up question? Um, these chemicals currently, you store them inside. You're already storing these chemicals, and it's just moving them outside into these pod-like structures?
Correct.
Correct? And then you're not replacing them with additional chemicals?
No.
Inside. Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
I have one.
Oh, go ahead, me, go ahead.
Sorry, follow-up question. You're getting a million questions. Um, so who, are you inspected now? Uh, your chemicals should be inspected yearly by a government entity that determines that your tanks aren't rusty, and they're not leaking, and so forth, correct?
I, I mean, I'll, I'll speak to the, to not only Entegris, but the campus. I mean, the building, fire marshal and building inspector have the option of coming through whenever they want, and then I'll-
Yeah, we, we also, I mean, you know, uh, we can also be inspected by EPA, E A D E P. Uh, you know, we have to let them into the facility.
Yeah, I was looking for EPA. Um, so they don't routinely come, like, yearly?
Uh, the EPA has their schedule, so they, uh, I'm not sure if EPA does, we get fairly routine visits with PADEP.
PADEP, okay. All right.
I could add something, Tessie. Um, our fire marshal is doing, he's starting, now that we're full, have more staff, they're doing, um, annual fire inspections. So his role in this would be, he would have the list of chemicals that are stored there. He would do his inspection, um, and then they would be required to file their emergency management plan with the township, so John would have access to it. And John could even speak more about that, because he, like, for example, he just visited, um, Jan, uh, Janson. We used to have a, um, industrial compact, um, which we are going to put back in place so that we are aware and have information on the record of all of the chemicals and different types of, um, you know, things that are being held at ship or at Ambler Yards or at Janson. So, um, so there is an ongoing program where we're inspecting this.
Oh, every, every year, you're updating an inventory?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's the, that's the goal.
Okay. Um, all right, that, that, thank you. That's all my questions.
I have a couple more. The, just kind of following up from Ms. Martin's question, you're storing these chemicals ex- in these external pods, um, potentially more than one? So you're going to hopefully have more than you're currently storing inside. Is that accurate?
Potentially at some point. We currently only have one pot coming, so.
Okay. And the space internally that you were storing these chemicals in have no active plans to utilize it to store chemicals or for any other use currently?
Correct.
And so it's not really a pressing matter, given the idea that there isn't a, an active plan to utilize that space for anything currently? Is that accurate?
Uh, we've been trying, we've been working on this for over a year, so, you know, so
Just to be clear, you have no active plans to utilize the space internally?
Correct.
Okay. And so?
Sorry, I misunderstood your question.
No. Okay, so the chemicals will be moved externally with the potential to add an additional storage pod for more chemicals. None of this would prohibit you from also storing chemicals inside the building. Is that accurate?
Uh, we do store additional chemicals inside the building. They are not, but they are not flammables.
Nothing, I'm sorry, let me clarify. Nothing would prevent you from storing these same type of chemicals also back inside the building? Is that accurate?
Other than not wanting to, that is correct.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have.
Can you turn?
Yes, if I may. First, I'd like to move all the exhibits onto the record, please.
Yeah, just as a matter of house, I'm gonna mark as exhibit T six, the zoning agreement board decision. I don't think it was attached, your application.
And that's the one from 2024, just a few months ago. Okay. I just want to say that, um, we have made this application by choice. What chemicals and solvents that are utilized on this campus are utilized all over in warehouses, industrial uses, assembly uses, manufacturing uses. These are not, uh, odd. They are not extreme, and they are doing the right thing by modernizing what they do here. These chemicals are being utilized today in this building that is not as fireproof and safe with no containment like these portable pods. So they're modernizing, they are educating, staying, you know, just like we upgrade our software systems at my law firm, we were always looking to do better. That's what these guys are trying to do. They're trying to do better. The chemicals are not being stored outside. We, I've heard that a number of times. They're being stored inside these containment systems that have all kinds of bells and whistles that they don't have now inside this warehouse building. So, uh, we're asking for approval so that they can improve the safety standards on the campus and for the neighborhood, for that matter. This is an improvement. And, uh, we know that the fire marshal agrees, the code enforcement department agrees, and, uh, we hope that you look favorably on the application. Thank you.
We're asked forty-five days on which to render the decision, close the hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is she doing the next one?
Doing the next one.
Okay, next up we have resolution twenty twenty four.
No, I'm not, we're in a.
Next up we have, um. Resolution twenty twenty four twenty eight. Uh, conditional preliminary, um, Spring House Estates, handing this back over to our solicitors.
This is a preliminary final land development approval for Spring House Estates land development. You've seen this application previously. We did prepare a resolution, uh, that the board has, and my understanding is that it's acceptable to the applicant?
Don't think it is.
Thank you. Yes, the. Yes, uh, the applicant reviewed the proposed resolution and is in agreement with that, I do have two signed copies.
Thank you. And you've also furnished the board with a memorandum of understanding.
Yes, that is correct, I, um, I was out of the office Friday, but we did forward it to the township. I did notice that, um. The, at number six, it says this M O U shall expire five years from execution by the, should be parties. And I, I will make that correction and send it back to you.
Questions?
I just have a question about the memorandum of understanding. The expiration five years by execution by the parties, that mean in the, the engagement? Of the M O U or the five years from the date that it's signed?
I couldn't hear the last part of your question.
I'm assuming that it's five years from the date that it's signed, or is it five years from the date? Of, of engagement?
That it was, the attempt was five years from the date the party signed the M O U.
Is there any ability to extend that?
Just as an explanation, uh, when Axe has, is a nonprofit corporation, so when they were taking it up the chain of command, the issue was? They didn't want it to be out there forever, so they suggested five years. And Axe is always going to be, uh, a neighbor in your town, uh, you know, a neighbor in your township, and they want to be a good neighbor, but there are procedures they have to follow because they are nonprofit corporation. So when it got up to, I did not have an expiration in it, when it got up to a certain level, they're like, it needs to have an expiration because the board changes, things change. So they just wanted to have that expiration, it's not that it wouldn't, that they wouldn't work with you.
No, I, I, I can appreciate that, and I also appreciate the fact that this board could look totally different in five years. Um, most likely it will look totally different and, um. We are local government, the lowest form of government, we don't move the fastest, so five years probably equivalent to one year in real life. I say all that to say, could we extend it or double it?
Say that last thing again.
Could we extend it or double it?
That would have to go back up, uh, to, there, there was a certain level it went up to, I'd have to go back to the past then. But again, um, Axe is in your, not only at Spring House Estates, but also Gwinnett Estates, they're in your township, they're going to want to.
Any additional question? You have no additional questions? So we have before us? Preliminary final resolution. Any questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the public? Let me just say the resolution number accurately.
That's wrong on my memo.
I have resolution twenty twenty four twenty eight?
Yeah.
Do we need to vote on the memorandum of understanding separately?
Uh, no, it's not going to be in action.
It doesn't, okay. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional, um, preliminary final of, of Spring House Estates land development number twenty four oh one L D. The, the resolution in its entirety is included in our board packet. I would like to motion to approve with inclusion of the memorandum of understanding, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up we have, hold on one second. Resolution twenty four twenty nine. Um, and this is included in our board packet. We have, I don't see a resolution, I don't see a memo from.
There is.
Is there? I don't see a memo from the.
Not a memo.
Yeah, I don't see a memo from the staff, but included is, is a, um, a resolution removing ten twenty one seven town pike from the historic resources list. The wheres and therefores explain, um, in detail that we are removing ten twenty one seven town pike? And, and all of the things that we're doing, are there any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Sure.
What is the historic resources list?
So you have historic resource protection standards in the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance refers to an historic resources map and which? Depicts all of the properties that, um, are protected by your zoning ordinance regulations. And then the historic resources list does it again so that we can make sure we have two things to update. So it's appendix two at the end of the zoning ordinance that lists all of the properties.
What, what, what? Leads to something becoming, going on to the historic resources?
I don't know how all of them got on there, I suspect.
I think it was voluntary during the, um. The O G historic committee in, in the eighties. The property owners could submit their home or registry on that list.
I know that's how it's supposed to work and definitely now for additional properties that want to get on, it's voluntary, so a property owner? Can ask to be added to it and under the regulations in the zoning ordinance, they can ask to be removed. The owners of this property now? Who, um? Are managed, are the owners of an estate essentially, they swear their, their parents never asked to be put on this list, so. I don't know in the beginning if, if there was hopes and dreams or if everybody officially, we don't have records of like everybody officially asking. The way the process is supposed to work under the ordinance is, is a property owner has asked to be included on that list.
And what, what's the? What comes with going on to the list? Is there, are there protections?
And Jamie can go into this in more detail, but the biggest thing is you can't demolish the structures that are on the list without going through additional processes.
And? These are all historic by designation? Or by choice? I, I guess.
I try.
I hear a lot about how important it is to preserve historic properties. And? I haven't made my feelings about that, uh, silent. So it's odd that you could just say something's historic one day and then the next day decide? That doesn't matter anymore. That just strikes me as? Is it no longer historic?
I think that it is not actually designated historic in the formal sense. This is a resource list the township established with no known parameters and no known recognition and no real standards. Thus, in the event that an owner chose to remove their name from this list, we're giving them the option since it is your property.
And that's the big thing is that the, the board at the time, just like the board now, has, has some options in how you put together your zoning ordinance. Not a ton always, but one of them is for, for historic protection standards like you have in your ordinance? To decide whether you're going to impose them and make it mandatory, which is one way to act, or to have it be voluntary, where property owners opt in essentially. Not opting, not being put in there with an opt out procedure, they had to actively, in theory at least, on paper, they had to opt in. And because this is a, it's a voluntary structure, they have the option to opt out then, even after they've opted in. So it isn't necessarily that it's no longer historic, it's that your whole system is voluntary.
I guess my point is the fact that it's historic doesn't really matter. Which is fine by me, I just think some things that come before the board regarding historic properties are completely contradictory? And make no sense to me whatsoever. That being said, I don't have any problem with pulling this off of whatever this historic list means or does.
We will also update the map so that the map and the list.
What, what was the impetus to do this? Did the fam, the property owners ask the township to remove?
They did. They did, yes.
Any additional questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to, um, approve twenty twenty, resolution twenty twenty four twenty nine, removing ten twenty one? Seven town pike from his, historic resource list, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Did everybody vote, is anyone opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
They're not voting on this one?
Is anyone abstaining?
I abstain.
Okay. One abstention, okay, thank you. Um, included in our board packet? Is a, a consideration regarding the Northern Montgomery County Recycling Commission ordinance? An inter municipality agreement. Within that memo, um, it's a recommendation from our township manager for us to, or assistant township manager, excuse me? For us to authorize the advertisement of a new municipal waste collection and recycling ordinance? That will include an amended and restated inter municipality agreement. Um, the agreement again was included in a board packet, are there any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Who would, who knows, we have someone on staff who sort of knows of it?
Jamie.
So we're moving or the proposal is to move from a per rata share of recycling to a tonnage based recycle. How do we know that that's going to be accurate? Do we have any audit rights to that or what, what kind of money are we talking about here?
Um, you would have access to the information that the consultant prepares, we use Huff Associate, so he gathers all of the information and then? That gets submitted to D E P for the nine oh four grant, and then when that comes back, they allocate that, right now they do it, like you said, based on population and what they were finding was? For example, North Wales Borough had the highest tonnage recycling reported, so it's really based on what's reported. Um, and so they had the highest amount but the smallest population, so they were getting the smallest fraction of the money that came from the grant. So they're trying to make it more equitable by basing it on the, how much recycling a municipality might be, is doing and isn't getting credit for, so.
Okay.
But the information is all provided, they collect all that data from the haulers and from the townships and then they compute, they put that into the, um, into their.
That information's all accessible to us if we.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Jamie, I have another question, so this, um. This means that? The amount of mass that each township produces then is going to become the, um? Measurement for how much money? Do we know that? What they're measuring is actually getting recycled?
Um, what do you?
So like, um, if people are putting, uh, plastic that can't be? Recycled into the bins, then that means those bins are going to weigh more than if that plastic wasn't in there, for example. And so they're getting, what I'm trying to understand is this, is there any incentive? To reduce the amount of non recyclable materials in those? Waste bins?
I, I don't, I don't actually know the answer to that because the reporting is coming? At the end, so I guess the tonnage that's getting reported has already taken out the things that aren't recyclable. Okay. But I, I mean, I can ask Huff Associates, that's the consultant that we're using, I can ask him that question.
Yeah. Well, we're, we're planning a field trip to the recycling facility, so.
That's right.
Maybe we can answer some questions there.
Yeah.
Any additional questions from the board? Additional questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a, a motion. To advertise the amendment title eight. Other Public Services Replacing Section ten eighty four Municipal Waste Collection and Recycling in Consistency with the Northern Montgomery County Recycling Commission Intermunicipality? The inter municipal agreement, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Next up, included in our board packet, um, was a memo and information dated September fourth relating to the? To the minimal municipal obligation for pension contribu, contributions for two thousand twenty five. Is there going to be an actual presentation or is it just the acknowledgement that we've received this? Everyone affirm that you have received this, there we are, thank you so much. Next up is the consideration of, um. The Stars contract with sewer specialty services. Uh, included in our board packet. I don't think that there's actually a memo.
Um, I think Gilmore has a memo in there or a.
I see it from.
It's a memo, I think, from Jim to Mimi.
Okay. Should we use that as the memorandum of explanation to the board? So, uh, our engineering firm included in the board packet is a memo outlining their support of us continuing to monitor our sewage collection? Systems and infiltration, it outlines, um. What has to be done and at what interval? Is respectfully asking the board to authorize the township manager to execute a contract? With sewer specialty services in the amount not to exceed ninety five thousand? Three hundred and thirty dollars and fifty cents for the scope that was defined within the attachments included, and so the attachments outline? What they would be doing, the unit price, the value, how much, so forth and so on. Are there any questions from the board?
I just have one question, was this, um, amount what we expected in the budget? Okay. Okay, saving us a couple bucks.
Is this a, is this a recurring thing? I, I assume it is, so each year we cover a certain amount of the sewer pipes?
Yeah, it's an annual program and so that, that's an estimate based on what we think some of the repairs may be. So the contract could be, um, slightly less than that, e- even if, um, they don't encounter as many repairs as are anticipated with the age of the infrastructure.
And you have in place a, um? A forward looking strategic plan for what part of the township you look at each year or how do you?
Yeah, we've, we've been starting in the areas that are the oldest because they're most likely to be in need of repair. And so as we progress to some of the newer areas, we, we could probably begin over time to sort of reduce the scope of this. begin over time to sort of reduce the scope of this annual service. Or the annual investigation.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, this is in Penland, was Hickon, Truel and Gwinnett and Park Avenue?
Yeah, it's essentially half of the Penland neighborhood. The goal would be to do the other half next year.
Any additional questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Co-Stars contract with Sewer Specialty Services to clean and inspect and repair the sanitary sewer lines in Hickon, Truel and Gwinnett and Park Avenue, in an amount not to exceed $95,330.50 and authorizing the township manager to execute that contract. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Question carries. Thank you. Next up is the consideration to, it says re-advertise, re-authorizing the advertisement of a bid for construction of Old Bethlehem Pike Culvert replacement and stream bank restoration. Included in our board packet was a memo. We originally advertised this in January of 2024. It had been held up as we were dealing with some work that Pico needed to work with and work out. That seems to have been resolved. And this is just an opportunity for us to re-authorize the advertisement of that bid for construction. Are there any questions from the board?
Entirely funded through grants, correct?
Correct. We have matching dollars included. Or is this the LSA?
The stream bank restoration is entirely funded by grants and 90% of the bridge project is funded by grants.
Okay. Any questions from the public or comments? Seeing none, I'd like to make a, a motion to re-authorize the advertisement of the bid for the construction of Old Bethlehem Pike Culvert replacement and stream bank restoration. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion carries. Next up, included in our board packet is the Township's Engineering Report for 2024. Are there any questions for the Township Engineer? Seeing none, I'd like to thank the Township Engineer for your hard work and due diligence. Next up is our Traffic Engineers Report for September 2024. Any questions for the Traffic Engineer?
I just have a quick question. When do you think we will get the left turn lane arrow back the way it was before the construction?
They're actually scheduled to be out there tomorrow. Converting it back. It just took us a little bit of time to work that through PennDOT and get, get it approved, get the permit amended. But Fred talked to them today. They were supposed to be out there tomorrow to do the work.
And Chad, in which directions are they making those changes?
Northbound Bethlehem Pike and westbound Norristown Road. Those were the two that were changed back in August where the left turn movements would get a red while the through movements were going.
If I'm coming from the YMCA and I want to make a left, I can pretty soon do that with one.
So they'll.
I mean, haven't you been doing that, Jamie?
I, I have an arrangement with the chief.
So.
Just kidding, I.
So with the modifications, it'll go back to the way it used to be.
Excellent. Thank you.
And will there be signage away upstream, I guess, from the intersection that lays out the lanes, you know, if you can turn left or turn right, or what, what direction you go in each lane?
For which approach?
I think we had a question a few weeks ago about this. It would be going south on Norristown?
West on Norristown?
Sorry.
Yeah, there's a, there's actually an overhead mast arm that has lane control signs.
Okay.
Delineating the left turn lane and the two, three lanes.
Okay. So that's overhead.
Overhead, correct.
Is there one in the opposite direction coming from the Beacon Property toward the intersection?
Yes.
Okay.
You mean like?
No, no. I, I mean, the new intersection. We, we had gotten a question some time ago that people didn't know which lane to get in to turn. And I just want to make sure that that's clear.
You're talking about the markings on the road?
I know, not on the road. They need to be up in the air, so.
Yeah, I believe the ones going eastbound are actually posted on the side of the road. And that's due to the, the close spacing of the, of the traffic signals at Bethlehem Pike and at Wellington. Those ones had. Summie Town, yeah. Summie Town come to the intersection, those signs are posted to the side of the road. Just because of the close spacing of the traffic signals at Wellington and Bethlehem Pike didn't allow for them to be placed overhead.
Yeah. One issue I've noticed, and I, I go from across the intersection toward 309. If the, if traffic's backed up there, you don't see those markers. So if you're new to the area, you might not know what the lane marking is. Anyway, I, I don't know if that can be addressed or not.
Yeah, we can take a, we can monitor it. And if there needs to be any adjustments later, we can look into that. But those lane use control signs on Summie Town Pike heading towards 309, there's a, there's a set of those signs at the Wellington, approaching Wellington and then approaching Bethlehem Pike too. So with this kind of improvement, there's always a little bit of time where it takes people to adjust to the new lane configurations, but we can certainly monitor it as we go along. And if there needs to be any minor adjustments to the signage, we can, we can certainly take a look at that.
Okay. One last question. This goes back to a project you helped us with some time ago. Do you know that the signs from PennDOT have been placed on 202? Well, actually, I guess, well, in regards to the brake retardant.
The signs have been placed on 202. They have been posted, or the signs on Summie Town Pike moved.
So the 202 signs have been up for a while. The one on Summie Town needs to go back, actually to Upper Gwinnett's side. So that wasn't moved at the same time. It has been marked and approved to be moved. I would have to double check to see if the crew got it yet or not.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions from the board? Thank you so much, Chad. Next up, we have the financial report that, for August 2024. Any questions from the board? Thank you so much, Melinda. I appreciate it. Next up, we have consideration of the invoice reports for September 10th and September 24th. Everyone had an opportunity to review. Any questions? I'd like to make a motion to approve the invoice reports for September 10th and September 24th. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up is the approval of the minutes for August 27th, 2024. They're included in our board packet. Does anyone have questions or concerns related to the minutes? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I do.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining? Very good. Next up is our Supervisor Lea's reports, which are included in our board packet. Assuming that there are no outstanding questions or concerns, we can move on to staff updates. Any staff updates? Any staff updates? Supervisor comments? Tessie?
Just a, a couple of quick things. I understand that the Fall Fest was a great success. So congratulations to the team that worked on that. I'd also like to thank the EAC members who supported the native plant walk on Sunday. That was a very successful event also.
Jamie?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for all of the hard work at the committee, that Sandy, that Kathy, that Mimi, staff, everybody, our police officers, public works. For Fall Fest, it was a busy day, a great day. And, you know, I, I was there from start to finish and I saw everyone working their butts off. So I really appreciate it. And I think the community had, had a great time. So till next year. Stay tuned for the date.
Jamie?
Just Fall Fest is great. You guys did an awesome job.
Thank you.
I just echo everyone's comments about the great work from Fall Fest.
I'd like to thank everybody that was involved in the Fall Fest. We, it, it can't be remiss to, to mention all the staff or public work staff who, who gave their time and energy on a very nice balmy Saturday afternoon. But the amount of preparation and time, it almost is a year in advance. It was evident in how well executed it was, how well attended it was, and how enjoyable it was to everybody in the community. So I just want to thank everybody for, for making that a cornerstone of one of the happenings of Lower Gwinnett and for growing and expanding each year and being amiable to the weather, which this year worked in our favor. We also want to thank, you know, our green guest, the Philly Fanatic, who came to join us as well. With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting has adjourned. Mike is really the only one that said aye.
Aye.
I heard everyone say.